Planning, zoning, and building committee meeting. Call the order, please. Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Lozara.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Approval of minutes of meeting dating November 10th, 2011. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'd like to table the report on recommendation, amending municipal code concerning the maximum allowable number of dogs in residential occupancy. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Are any questions?
Okay, how long are we tabling it for, or are we taking it totally off the agenda?
We're...it's indefinite.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's indefinite.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings, amendments to local building code, that'll be December 22nd, groundwater ordinance, December 22nd, city of Wooddale floodplain buyout policy in January, transfer stamps in January. Any questions? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Called to order the December 8th meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee, with the roll keeper show the same people present, and first of all, is an approval of the minutes of November 10th, 2011. Do I have a motion?
I have...I'll motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item is a report and recommendation on the property tax levy. Do we go to the manager, or to our esteemed Finance Director? Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I sent you a brief memo on the property tax levy, along with a few PowerPoint slides, kind of going over the high point, the change in the tax rate, change in EAV, things of that nature. We did discuss the property tax levy about a month, month and a half ago, at the committee level, and the direction to staff was to proceed as we had in years past, passing the 4.99, staying just under the tax cap, per the PTEL, and then letting the county knock us back down. We've been advised that CPI for this property tax year is 1.5 percent, and we get the lesser of CPI or 5 percent, so we're anticipating getting a 1.5 percent increase on the levy. Like I said, this just follows form with prior years, which is what staff was directed to do a couple of weeks ago. We do have an ordinance, so we need to pass and get it to the county before the last Tuesday of the calendar year, and next week being the last council meeting of the calendar year, we do need a motion for an ordinance to approve the 2011 property tax levy, so that we can get that down to the county and levy our taxes accordingly.
One quick comment, if I may, on the equalized assessed evaluation, and I apologize, I wasn't here last week. From 2009 to 2011, it went down from 730 million, 500,000, down to 594 million, 400,000, approximately. So that's cooking in finally, the lower value of the homes.
Correct. Last year was, I believe, around 9.6 percent. In some conversations with the assessor's office, as well as some other elected officials that have also had conversations, we've been advised that preliminarily, the decrease in the EAV is...was going to be approximately 10 percent last year, 10 percent this year, and give or take 10 percent next year. So unfortunately, the property values have already bottomed out for the residents, but now the valuations are catching up. It's kind of the roller coaster, and it's the last car of the roller coaster. The valuation is on the triennial review that the township does. So they are...the lower values are starting to roll through now.
And I'm sure last week you did explain why taxes are still up a little bit, even though evaluation of the homes are down.
Because about a month or so ago, we had that conversation. Didn't do anything last week.
Or the...
Yeah, we did...
We...sorry, the week...
I believe we did go through that, yeah.
Okay, good. So, questions? I have anybody else? Alderman Wesley.
One question. So the tax levy is staying the same as that we had passed in the past, right? We are increasing tax levy? We are increasing?
No, we are requesting an increase, correct.
And what is...what is the max tax levy that is out there that we could go to? Are we below...still below what we could go to?
Sure, the tax cap law, the PTEL, the property tax extension limitation law states that we get the lesser of 5 percent or CPI. And so we levy 4.99, just to make sure that we could capture everything up to that cap. But the CPI for this property tax year, we've been advised, is 1 and 1/2 percent. So even though we're requesting the 4.9, we're going to base all the budget numbers and everything on 1 and 1/2. Difference is, if somebody built the house, or somebody improved one of their buildings in the industrial park, and there was some added value to that, if we only requested the 1.5, there's a chance that we might not be able to capture that added value on that property or that new house. And so that's why we kind of generally shoot high and then let the county knock us back down.
I think...I think what I'm trying to say is that the maximum levy is what we could go to. What is the max? Does Fire District is...
Yeah, without having a special hearing on it, 5 percent is the most that...
Not that I want to go there.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do the 4.99, just to stay just a little bit below that.
Alderman Lozara.
The 1.5, is that pretty much guaranteed, then? Or is this out, which is what you're saying, is what you think we'll get, as far as being able to raise it? 1.5?
I mean, I don't want to say that anything is guaranteed, but historically, what the county has advised us, the CPI is, we've gotten that within a tenth of a point either way.
Okay, so it can be lower?
It could, but typically, it's been right there, or like a tenth or a half of a tenth of a percent higher. Yeah, historically, the last three years, it's been pretty much spot on to what the county's advised us that it would be.
And if for some reason, we decide to freeze it, would that be something we could do as a council? Number is not raising, is there a possibility?
Certainly, yeah, it would be a possibility that you could do. Yeah, like I said, we...was it a month, month and a half ago, kind of had that conversation at the committee level, and the consensus that I was hearing was to just continue as we had in the past.
To go for the 1.5, then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And so that's why we prepared it this way, out of that meeting from about six weeks ago.
Okay. Have we ever frozen as a...
Not that I'm specifically aware of.
Okay.
I could go back and look, but I...looking back, we have the property tax levies back to 90, give or take, and I haven't seen any flat levies, just going back looking through.
Well, just one more question. On raising it 1.5, what kind of real money does that put in Wooddale? Do we know that, or...
Yeah, that's the number I heard kicking around up there, probably between 30 and 50. I haven't ran the actual numbers, but that's pretty close.
So 30,000 on a 1.5?
Correct.
Okay. Doesn't sound like a lot. All right, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I brought this up before, and I want to make it clear that it's very important that we levy to the max that we can, because if we don't levy to the max that we can...the CPI is 1.5, which you got that number recently from the county, Brad?
It's been a month, month and a half ago.
Okay, those are the ones that sets our tax rate, basically. But if we don't levy at the 4.9, and the county throws us back at the CPI of 1.5, if we just went flat and don't levy nothing, all that time that we've gained of 1.5, 1.5, is going to be...we're starting from zero again. So then we're going to...then we're going to lose again. And what I'm saying here is, it's important that we levy, what the county is saying, at least a CPI, because we can't go above that. Well, we can with a referendum, but with the raises, and the union contract, and everything else, we have to keep up with what's going on out there, too. Otherwise, we're going to run the city backwards very quickly. That's all I want to mention.
In other words, if we don't raise it, it's gone forever. That amount, we can never make up.
Correct. That amount, and any compounded interest over the next however long the city's around, correct, would be gone...gone forever.
Right. Any other questions? Make a motion, then, to approve the report and recommendation on the property tax levy, as stated by our Finance Director.
Second. Is that a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would this take a voice vote? It's money. Yeah, let's do a voice vote, if you would, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey. Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lozara.
No.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
The next item, I'm sorry I missed it the first time, is a report and recommendation on the strategic plan. Mr. Manager.
You, Alderman Shockey. Included in your packet about almost two weeks ago, staff put a more revised version of the plan, not revised in content, but revised in more of a booklet format that would look very similar to this, the actual approved plan, if the council were to approve it. The idea would be to have a blueprint or a document to reference as what the council's priorities are moving forward. Not to say that approving the plan is committing to spending all these dollars, but just a written plan to work off of, so when we go to the CIP planning process, or we go to the budget planning process every year, then we reference this plan as being, you know, a list of our priorities. So that being said, this whole process started in the summer, as you know. We did discuss this in workshop format. It's now, you know, finely tailored from our last discussion. The one change from the summertime is staff added in a scheduling portion to each priority. For example, every priority is listed as a fiscal year 2013 project, a beyond project, or an ongoing project. So there's some that may be priorities that are attainable in 2013. There are some that are obviously ongoing, which we would do every year, and then obviously beyond would mean, you know, something beyond fiscal year 13 is a recommended planning for that individual action. So like I said, you've seen all this already. I'll just...I guess I can field questions. The end game here would be that, at the council level, we would pass a resolution similar to how we do the CIP, adopting the plan, and then this is just our document that we can reference, that, hey, this stuff is important to the city council, and let's work towards getting this into the budget, or getting this into the CIP, and kind of mapping it out, and then as we go on, revise and update the plan.
I'd just like to mention that this is the first time we've had something like this, and I think it's well worthwhile. It's something we all should keep on the top of our desk, and if there's questions from citizens, or on our own, many of the answers are right here. And as we go along, if we don't like it, like you say, we can change it, but at least we have the basic plan for the next five years made out, and I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Yes, and like you said, built into the plan, there's parameters about updating, and updates to the council, and revisions to the plan. So that'll be on an annual basis, where staff will come to you with progress reports on where we're at with the plan, how many additions that need to be made, and then after a certain amount of time, you know, we'd have another workshop, and obviously, you know, revise the plan, because obviously, priorities will change, or new things will come up. So it'll be, you know, a living document, we'll be referencing it, just like a budget or a CIP. But then again, like I said, no official approval of dollars spent, just a blueprint for what's a priority.
Shows you're listening to us and the citizens, and we have a black and white plan in front of us, but that can be changed as needed. Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I just have one question. I did read this, and I agree, it's a great document, fall back on...there's one that I would probably revisit down the line, hiring a landscaping maintenance specialist. I guess we'll look at that at budget time, if we might add another personnel.
I agree.
The other one that threw me a curveball here is on page 24, action number three, the city engineer is currently reviewing the benefit, continue participating with Elk Grove study. More info will be forthcoming to the council. Now, we have had that study now back for almost, I would say, probably two or three The first phase of the study that we paid for for Elk Grove that we went in at, I just don't know what the delay is with that study coming back. Are we moving forward? I believe a couple of weeks ago, the mayor brought up the point that Elk Grove wanted to know if we want to go into a second phase with this project. I believe, Mayor, if I am mistaken, it was like 20,000?
Twenty...23,000, if everybody who was in the first time is in the second time.
So my question is, when is our engineer, or someone's going to tell us that that study's benefiting us or not? Because it's been a while. It's been a reviewing stage now for several times, and it's in this thing, and I don't know why it would be here.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, when we originally constructed the document, obviously, this was still in the beginning phases, so that's why it was listed. There's some other things in here that obviously were listed as priorities, and we've kind of already accomplished them. I'll defer to Bill Blacky on current status of the Bussy Woods thing, if you want to go over that now.
I just want to know when we're going to know, because I know...that's fine, let's know now.
We had a meeting at DuPage County on November 4th, participated in that, along with John Kramer was there, and Ross Hitchcock from Itasca, because our concern was that this preliminary study really doesn't assist anybody but Elk Grove, in our opinion. The county's opinion is that they're not going to spend any time or money on any more technical studies until there are political decisions made regarding how Bussy Woods is going to be handled. In addition, I had a meeting this week with the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group, and talked to Steve McCracken, who is looking...is familiar with the Bussy plan, and is concerned about it from an environmental standpoint as well. And I just found that out this week. So there is no reason, in our opinion, not only based on the science that they're using in the report, we don't feel it's prudent at this time to spend any additional dollars on any technical studies until there are political decisions made. So we're not putting any more effort into reviewing any reports by the Elk Grove consultant.
Mr. Manager.
For the purposes of strategic plan, I still think it's important, maybe we just strike Elk Grove and leave in, you know, Bussy Woods study participation, because there may be an opportunity, maybe the bladder comes back, or there's other programs that we could look at, and it is a priority to fix what's going on over there. So maybe just, you know, strike the Elk Grove, but, you know, make Bussy Woods still a priority.
Either that, or if somebody knows Periwinkle personally, we can get her to do something. Mr. Wesley, yes?
Billy, you said you met with the county on November 4th?
Pardon?
November 4th?
Yes, we...there was a meeting...
Microphone.
...at DuPage County.
You know, this has been a big topic for us for a long time. Mr. City Manager and Bill, I mean, we're at November 8th here, and we never got anything on it. I mean, you go to these...I take it you go to these meetings, and you charge the city of Wooddale to go to these meetings, correct?
Generally, there's some charge, but it's nominal.
So I guess my question is, why aren't we told we're spending money in Elk Grove? I mean, shouldn't we know something? On a project? I mean, we spent how many thousands of dollars? Please tell me something on this. Someone.
Mr. Mayor. Probably in Bill's defense, I mean, that's when we asked, Al was up here giving us his...that they're still processing the numbers at that time, after that meeting, if I remember right? That's...well, that was the...that's what Al had said that night, and we said we wanted more before we go any further.
I had talked to Al since. Unfortunately, he can't...couldn't be here tonight, because he's downtown with his wife, but at the hospital. But he said to go ahead, and he was reviewing the...I had put together some minutes from that meeting, and he was reviewing them, and then he told me to go ahead and pass those along, so those are available, if anybody is interested in those.
Yeah, I think we'd all like copy of that, if you would, Bill. Alderman Coles, did you want to say something?
Well, I don't want to say anything. No.
Okay.
I'll hold back.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor. Jeff, this week, we just received a letter from Elk Grove, they want to have a meeting on the 15th, so are we going to send them a letter and say we're not...no longer interested, or we're not going to participate in this study, because it doesn't seem to work for us, in light of the news we just received this week?
Well, actually, you know, it's just not one meeting that Bill goes to. You know, Al was in conversation with multiple people, you know, regarding the study. The council had got cursory inputs along the way, as far as where we were with information still pending, and the last thing we want to do is say, hey, we're done with the study before we're absolutely sure we're done with the study. So I think the information has been out there. I don't think we were done with the study as of November 8th. I would still like to talk to Al about a couple of things as well, so...
Mayor. So are we going to this meeting next week, or...
I don't see a reason why I wouldn't go. I mean, we're not committing any dollars. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Alderman Coles.
Yeah, I'd just say it's going to be like a committee like SHOCK was, where we donated $50,000 one year, $200,000 the next year, and then we didn't get anything out of it. And the money just went by the...flew away, you know, like put wings on the dollar bills, and they all flew away, because it looks like Elk Grove...it looks like Elk Grove Village, all they're doing is looking for money from us, and arriving at nothing.
Mr. Manager.
No, it's not like that. The study is at defined cost, or the whole project's at defined cost, and keep in mind, the city council only committed $2,000 to the project, not $25,000. So we've only spent $2,000 for the initial phase of the project to see if it'd work, and obviously, it's looking like it's probably not going to work. So we've only committed $2,000, and that was over a year ago.
All right, just looking out for money. Anybody else? So is that just a report?
Well, we'll need a motion to adopt the plan, and then we'll come to the city council with a resolution adopting the plan.
Okay, I'll make a motion that you will be adopting a plan to bring back to us. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings, the revenue handbook on December 22nd, the audit engagement on December 22nd. Is audit being engaged? Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure, if I may, for a brief moment on the audit engagement. Three years ago, the city did an RFP, and selected Wolf as the provider for services for our annual audit. The audit that they just presented, was it about a month ago, was the last year of the initial three-year engagement. In the original RFP, there was a mutually agreed upon extension of three years, and the city, I think, four times in a row, has terminated the contract after three years. And just...I know we talked real, real briefly at the strategic planning about the pros and cons of that, so what that's going to be actually is effectively an up or down on extending Wolf for three more years. I have some literature talking to the...how long you should have an auditing firm, partner rotation, things of that nature, as well as they are getting me some pricing for those three years. So effectively, that particular item on the 22nd is going to be extend them for three more years, or direct me to go out and rebid the audit again. That's effectively what that item's going to be. But I'll obviously flesh that out better than I'm doing right now, but just kind of a heads up, that's going to be an up or down, or a go-back-out sort of item.
So we've had them for three years now?
Correct.
We can't just make it one more year, or two more years? We have to go to three?
Technically, it's three one-year contracts, so we could always terminate it at any time if we wanted to. But typically, from their cost amortization standpoint, they build them on five- or six-year models, their cost analysis, and, you know, what they want to make on a job, and things of that nature.
I had mentioned before that I liked the idea of changing once in a while to put new eyes on what we're doing, and finding perhaps what the other guy missed. You mentioned that somebody new in the company, or some different person in the company, will be doing it each year? Is that so, or what's the story on?
Correct. There have been a suggestion or a request to possibly switch partners on the engagement, and they have agreed to do that. They have one of two people, for sure, that they would be able to rotate to. I don't know that they would want to do that annually, but they have committed to switch partners from the one that we have now to somebody different as a reviewer, kind of an overseer of the entire job. They have already agreed to that.
You have any other questions about that in the council? So they will be switching this coming year? They will be switching partners to look at our books?
Correct, and provided we...you...the eight of you vote to extend their contract, yes, they would...they would switch partners.
And I'm not sure why you mentioned three years, when you say it's basically a one-year contract three times. I'm not sure I understand the legalities of that.
Because it's a professional services contract, we're not...we have to do a new engagement letter every year that states what the fee is and what they're going to do. But I can break all that down for two weeks from now, in the memo, and explain kind of the legal side of why it's three one-year deals and stuff like that. I can get into that in the memo I provide to you. in the memo I provide to you.
Would that be agreeable to everybody? Okay, we can do with that. And the next item, six-month financial review on December 22nd again. And the CIP, that's in January. And the commercial franchise fee, we're holding off till January? Is that, that, the commercial franchise fee, is that the one for those who don't pay taxes? The hairdresser, the barber, the whatever, Mr. Manager?
No, that's actually, the commercial franchise fee is a proposal from our waste service provider to include businesses in our contract potentially. I put that in the manager newsletter, kind of an overview about how that could be a benefit to both the city and its businesses. So it has to do with garbage, waste.
Oh, oh, okay. That's the garbage one. Was the other one passed while I was gone? About the other stores having to pay a permit? Good. I appreciate that. Thank you. And anybody else have anything for the next? Mr. Wesley?
I just have one, one question. Maybe it could be answered tonight. The money that we get for AT&amp;T to update our, I forgot what, the capture agreement or whatever, have we heard from Comcast yet on how much we gained for them? Because that's, that's ongoing, and we haven't heard enough in back on that. You could put it on the next agenda, or if he's got the answer. I, I don't care. I could wait.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought, I'd written a memo on that. If, if I can recirculate it if I did. Real briefly, though, the current contract that we, the current franchise agreement we have with Comcast expires in July of 2015. But they do have a renewal window, they call it, where no more than three years before you can start to renegotiate your franchise agreement. And as part of being in Nordcat, them and the Dupesha, excuse me, the Metro Mayor's Caucus came up with a model ordinance for Comcast franchise agreements. So in January of 2012, we're looking to contact Comcast to renegotiate our franchise agreement and get those, that peg capital fee incorporated into it. The current language, the current agreement we operate under, doesn't have a provision for us to be able to charge that fee.
So we only could charge, I'm sorry, we only could charge AT&amp;T right now?
Right now, correct.
So that's the money that's going to pay for updating the, the room here?
Correct.
And I thought we were getting, okay.
Yeah, so in, yeah, in seven months, we're going to be, I already, I've talked to the guy a couple of times. He's in Elmhurst. And in July, we're going to get that going.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy Wesley.
I don't give too many compliments when compliments are due, and this is a compliment that's due to the building department. I got a phone call today that a new business is coming in in town. I'm not going to mention the name yet, but they were fighting with Bensonville for a year and a half, and they came to the city of Wooddale, and we had their building, their permits for their business within two to three days. So I commend the building department working with that business to get them in.
Very good. Anything else? Then I'll make a motion to adjourn the finance and administration committee of December 8th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Call the Public Works Committee to order, making a motion to approve the minutes from November 10th, 2011. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can't get that. Okay, we got a lot tonight. Okay, but we'll make it quick. Item number four is a work order to award Baxton Woodman for the 2013 Stonem Street reconstruction design engineer not to exceed $42,000. That is my motion.
I'll second it.
Question?
Question. Alderman Coles?
I thought Stonem was just done a couple of years ago. Am I right about that? Didn't you put a surface on that a couple of years ago in Stonem?
Not all the way, but Mr. Force, I mean, Mr. Kramer can answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Stonem was completed before I started with the city. I'll say '05 seems to ring in the back of my mind, but this is from Hemlock to Pines, the last three tenths of a mile that was not upgraded. The pavement surface is beginning to ravel. There is no curb and gutter. Currently, there's still swales and ditches there, no sidewalk. If you remember, Stonem has sidewalk on the north side of the street, one side of the street only. This section does not have any sidewalk. So all those improvements will be on this three tenths of a mile stretch. This was identified.
Completely digging up the whole street then? Just, just doing repair work on it?
No, it is a reconstruction. It'll be a full reconstruction, similar to the way Deer Path was. It was a rural cross-section. Now it's going to be a urban cross-section.
Pipes and all.
The water main's in fairly good shape, so we're not looking to do that, but there will be storm sewer and some spot sanitary, should there be any issue with the crossings.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Art Woods?
John, my question has to do with the, the $42,000. We budgeted $80,000 for this project, and it's coming in at $42,000. Is that the total amount, and we're saving that much money, which is a good thing?
I actually didn't put that $80,000 together. That was done by the previous city engineer. Not sure if he thought the water main needed to be designed as well as part of that. Not sure if he had some other improvements in mind. What we came up with was staff, we did some television work out there, looked at the sanitary sewer system, we looked at the water main, and concluded that since the water main's not under the pavement, there was no need really to get too involved with that. It was mainly just a reconstruction. So I, I can't speak to what was put in the engineering dollars in a CIP several years ago. Maybe they were just being cautious. But again, I think we got some good pricing on the design, and there were some other line items that soil borings were taken out of and things like that. So I don't know, I don't believe there would be any other additional design. Again, we would come to the council if that would require that, but right now we're fairly confident with our, or we are very confident with our design numbers.
Okay, and one other question, that we were making a change from a rural curb setting. When did we make that decision, or why did we make that?
I guess because the rest of Stonem was completed in that fashion. So to follow along with our design standards in that area would be to bring it up to that. We wouldn't reconstruct that street then if we did not put curb and gutter in. We would basically go through and resurface the street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I, I, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Pass. Okay. Item number four, or item number five, reporting a recommendation work order for Baxton Woodman for the citywide drainage and flood improvement study, and the amount not to exceed $143,300. That is my motion.
Second.
I have a second. Questions? I know there's several questions. Alderman.
Yes, the map we received, I overheard Alderman Coles talking to Bill about a certain area that wasn't marked on this map. Does this $143,300 include any additional areas that have not been identified on the map? Mr. Kramer?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Blacky.
Mr. Blacky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, John. The, the, the work order you see is, is one that's designed to be flexible. The, the map indicates general areas. It's schematic. It wasn't meant to exclude any areas that, that we think, which we will gain through the number of meetings. We have several meetings included. So one of the processes for the study is to refine these areas and make sure we're not missing anything. This is an upper limit, the 143.3. There, there are things in the works like the Harvey Oakwood area, which is a possible consideration for moving up in the CIP as far as roadway construction. Drainage will be a component of that. If that goes forward, that would reduce the cost of this because that area would be taken out and, and studied separately. Similarly, once we get into some of the areas that we're looking at, the, there's a number in there for modeling of areas that haven't been studied. There are several different types of models that can be used. Some are static, some are dynamic. The dynamic ones are more extensive, and, excuse me, therefore, we have included the, the dollars as kind of an upper limit. If some of those areas don't need quite as sophisticated modeling, you'll see the dollars come down. That's why it's designed as, as opposed to a lump sum, as, as a not to exceed. So it's an upper limit cost. It's designed to be flexible as we meet with anybody that has information historically, like Alderman Coles, who's, who's have, has an extensive background and history with the city. Photographs, talking with residents, conferring with Public Works, all these meetings will gather this information, and we'll refine and define the, the areas and how we're going to study them. So the, the work order is designed to be very flexible.
Okay. And any other Aldermen who do have any questions? I think are welcome to go, go to the stormwater meeting when Bill is there and bring up any other topics like this. Just one real quick question. I had a resident call and say they had received a phone call that they would be having their water or something tested. They were very vague about what it was. I guess the wife took the phone call, and he'd never got a chance to listen to it himself, and he was a little concerned about it. This is in the, actually in the, right next to the first ward and the second ward. Mr. Kramer?
Was drinking water, potable drinking water being tested?
I don't, he, he didn't know. That's what he was asking me.
Okay, traditionally, the Public Works Utilities Division is required by the IEP to do CCR, Consumer Confidence Reports, on water quality, where they get a random sampling of addresses around town. They, they request the resident to fill a jar full of water early in the morning, and that, and those results are sent to an IEP certified lab, and they come back to assuring that the water quality is good. So that's probably what that is. That's not something that the city deems necessary. That's for our water license, for us to continue to have not only Chicago water, but to have licensed operators and part of our requirements for the CCR.
Good. And gradually let us know. I wish I had known beforehand so I could have answered his question more clearly, but I'll call him and let him know. Thank you.
Mr. Coles, could I just ask you one question? What was the area that, that was missing that I, I don't?
Well, there's two areas. There's one on a curve on Montclair.
Okay.
That floods. And then there's one on the corner of Juniper and Montclair that floods, that comes out of the forest preserve.
Okay.
And them areas get so deep that you can't drive even a four-wheel-drive car through them. And it, it makes that area where I live in and the other 13 houses or 14 houses island. We're on an island, so we can't get out, you can't get in. And I've seen it where it's been waist-high. The water's waist-high. And on Joe Lickman's house, that the water was up to the first floor. He, he, when he went into that house, he had to take all the windows out of the basement, all the windows out and put in a glass block. He had to put overhead sewers and everything because he was flooding everything.
Okay.
So, and then you got, you got one that's marked number 11, which is on 121, which has the backyard that floods. I've been over there too, so.
All right, well, if any Aldermen up here has some areas that needs to be addressed, please notify Bill or the engineer firm, and we'll get them on a list and, and look at it more that we might have missed. We might have missed.
Oh, yeah. I, I got a picture in my shop, 1999, where the kids were, one of the kids was swimming in that corner.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion. I have a second. Any other? Mr. Kramer?
Just one item, if I could draw your attention to the schedule listed on the front of the work order. We left that to be determined. In my cover memo, I indicated that I would like a majority of the, majority of the results and recommendations brought to the council in summer of 2012. I want to make sure that, that's acceptable to everybody. I'm sure we're going to be bringing periodic snippets of this to you more frequently, but as, in general, we would like the whole thing by the summer, fall, so we can incorporate it into the next following year's CIP for recommendations and the budget planning phases. So I just, again, I didn't leave that blank for any other reason than I wanted to make sure if there was any input that the council had, they could provide us with it now, and we could then firm up this schedule.
Okay.
Mayor?
In passing the study, I would hope that when we do pass the study, that we're going to allocate some money to this at budget time. I know the city, it was in the manager's report about speaking with Bensonville over there behind South Cedar, the property which is purchased. So if we're going to spend $140,000, hopefully, we're going to allocate some money and move forward.
Yes, the mayor is correct. Staff wouldn't recommend this project unless we would have a, a plan in place to recommend also putting aside money to do the projects that come out of this study. And in the rough CIP draft that we have right now, we are proposing that each subsequent year, we set aside a certain amount of money, and we do spend that money on the projects that are highlighted in this study. And the mayor is correct. I did tentatively, well, I did speak with Bensonville, and they are willing to partner with us in that South Cedar area. So we, we know right off the bat that that's a project that's, that's in here that we do have a partner for, that, you know, we could allocate money for.
Mr. Coles?
It's just that we spend money for studies, and sometime they get on the shelf, and that's as far as they go. And I'm positive that, not blaming anybody here, but over a period of years, there must be studies sitting on the shelf over there that's been looked at, and it's still sitting there for 20 years and never been touched. I'm certainly sure there are. So we don't mind spending the money as long as we get the work done. Let's get the work done. If we can't afford a study one year, we, we can do the work. We'll do the study the next year and do the work. And that's what, that's the way it's going to be done.
Okay. Anyone else? I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any pos? Motion carries. Number six, reporting a recommendation. I'll make this as motion, pay request number two, partial anchor electric company in the not to exceed $66,462.35 for standby generator upgrade on the south wastewater treatment plant, Public Works. That is my motion, second payment.
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Item number seven, reporting a recommendation, partial payment request, anchor electric company not to exceed amount of $58,212.82 for standby power upgrade for the south wastewater treatment plant, Public Works facility. That is pay request number three, partial. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Why, why is there two of them? Pay requests?
Because we didn't.
Mr. Kramer? Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
When the timing of the second pay request was received by Public Works, it did not give ample time to get to the last committee meeting. So since that time, the contractor has gotten the Public Works generator installed and, you know, put a fair amount of work into both facilities. Right now, the Public Works facility passed its load test today, so Right now, the Public Works facility passed its load test today, so that project is 100% done. The south generator, which was part of this, which was just the transfer switch, that project's about 95% done right now, so we've almost finalized out the job. The next pay request will be the balance, remaining balance, the reason why they were both on the meeting tonight is it just so happened that we got two pay requests within about 35 days, so unfortunately, we missed a meeting on the front end, so we had to put them both on this agenda.
Okay, because it just seems odd that you said south. Okay, I need, that is my, that is my motion, do I have a second? I have a motion. Any questions, concerns? All in favor? Aye. Pos? Motion passed. Item number eight, reporting a recommendation, partial payment request for MQ Construction in the not to exceed amount of $286,083.80 for 2011 alley reconstruction project, that is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Question?
Are they all done with all the alleys? John? Mr. Kramer?
No, due to some permit regulations that we did not receive back from the county on the alley adjacent to Division Street and Wooddale Road, we've suspended the project for this year, we'll pick up the remaining alley in the spring. Right now, we've signed a work order for the contractor to, or excuse me, a change order to the contractor to start in April and then finish in May. We envision that project to go relatively quickly, as long as we have good weather. Our concern was, due to the fact that there are several businesses on that stretch, there are two homeowners that have garages, and there's a small apartment building that has a garage, if we ran into inclement weather, and we would displace those people, both for their business and for reaching their homes, we didn't feel that to be prudent, so we decided, because of the contractor delays, some utility conflicts with AT&amp;T, we decided to push that project off.
Oh, yeah, and say it's pulled off in the spring. Mr. Smokey?
Mr. Kramer, do we have plans on the board? I know we talked before, but is there any plans for the alley to go through next year behind, what is it, Tom's Axe and that furniture store?
Mr. Kramer?
That's correct, I did prepare some documents for the CIP to include the installation of a new alley between Hemlock and Cattel, but don't quote me if I'm incorrect on that, but currently, both are dead ends from either direction, so yes, we did include that in there as a possible capital improvements project.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? I have a motion, right? I, I mean, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Reporting a recommendation, pay request, partial request for Arrow Road construction not to exceed amount of $696,862.42 for the 2000 street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement project. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Item number 10, reporting a recommendation, pay request final to ALAMP Concrete Contract Incorporated not to exceed amount of $42,960.80 for Edgewood Ash Hemlock Water Main Replacement Project. That is my motion.
Second.
Comments? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, did I get a second on the motion? Yeah, I did. Reporting, item number 11, reporting a recommendation, pay request final for ALAMP Construction not to exceed amount of $86,661.25 for the Addison Road Water Main Replacement. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Make your motion.
I have, I have a second. Questions? Concern? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12, reporting a regulation, recommendation for pay request number four, partial for AM coating and painting not to exceed amount of $119,400.75 for the reservoir three and four repaint, painting project. That is my motion.
Second.
I have a second. I have a question. Is that project almost completed? Mr. Kramer?
Correct. As last check, and that was earlier this week, we had final prime on both the inside and the outside of the tank, reservoir three. Hopefully, if we get some additional dry weather with temperatures above 35 degrees, we can put that final surface on this year. Again, the prime coat's the coat that's most important, if we needed to push it off till the spring, we could. We know we have some more restoration to do that will not take place this year, so we will not see that job completely finalized out, but we would envision if we could get that final painting in, we could refill the tank. Right now, we're not seeing any disruption in water service for the residents, pressures are all good around town, we do have the redundancy of having the other res four there, plus Tower One on that side of town, so it's been no disruption, and again, we just didn't really luck out with the weather. We had, you know, a fair amount of rain and moisture in the forecast, which is not cohesive for painting, no pun intended.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Item number 13, reporting a recommendation, contract award to Elmen and Nelson Corporation not to exceed amount of $374,948.44 for the Wooddale Decorating Light Project. I have a motion, do I have a second? That will be my motion.
Second.
Questions? Concerns? Almons are.
The, these lights, where are the funds coming to pay for these lights?
Mr. Kramer or Brad? Mr. Kramer?
They were a general fund, they were originally moved, I believe, the first time, and I'll let Mr. Wilson confirm that, but I want to say tourism first, and then we moved funds to general fund.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the current budget, they were put in the CIP, so the General Capital Projects, which is the same pot of money, if you will, that the roadway projects come out of, the sidewalk project, the alleyway project, and years past, going back four, five, six years ago, the council budgetarily had put like $50,000 a year, give or take, in the, out of the tourism fund money, to kind of piecemeal the project along, and it kind of stalled a couple of times, and just never really, it never got finished effectively, and so, was it two years ago, the decision was made to move it to the Capital Projects Fund, where there was more funding available to just pretty much do it in, in one shot, or I think it's split up in two construction years, I believe, the, the south leg and the north leg are two separate ones, but just, in essence, to get the project done, it was moved to where there was a greater funding source available.
Just, so there is, there is money coming out of the tourism fund, you were saying? $50,000?
Prior years there had been, in this current budget, there is not the, the whole funding for this, not with this, no.
This is all coming out of general fund?
The capital, General Capital Projects Fund.
Okay. And, do you know how many street lights this is buying?
Forty-seven. Forty-seven lights.
Forty-seven lights? And, are you done?
Go, go ahead.
Is, this should be completed of all the decorated lights, then, right? Mr. Kramer?
So all the decorative lights on Wooddale Road that staff was made aware of, is from Center Street to Foster, and from currently about midway past Oak Hill where we left off, to Montrose.
So that will take care of all Wooddale Road, then? Anything else? Mr. Kramer?
I'm not exactly sure, I know this project, this, this project's been going on for excessive 10 years, so I'm not sure if this finalizes, it, it definitely does finalize Wooddale Road as far as we're concerned, so, again, I think it would be, it would be a nice touch to finish them off, in, in looking at the prices we've seen for doing smaller amounts, 10 lights, we got some very good pricing on this, especially with the LED, excuse me, LED alternate.
And this Wooddale Light Project has gone on for years, I mean, Mr. Char.
Yeah, the intent was to do Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road from edge to edge, but the Irving Park Road part of it was put off because we've got those, all those wires up above, and until we can get rid of those, it's, it would be silly to put in the, the lower lights.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Item number 14, reporting a recommendation, resolution allowing temporary construction easement for the installation of sanitation check valve at 538 Ermin. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Item number 15, reporting a recommendation, resolution allowing a temporary construction or easement of installment in sanitation check valve for 548 Ermin Drive. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos? Motion carries. Items be considered future meetings, items, brush pickup, parkway, tree pruning options December 22nd, Pace Van Poll Service Lease Agreement, item number C, Pace Drug and Alcohol Policy Testing Program, December 22nd, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Coles, he had something to say or add on, so Joe, you could, Mr. Coles?
Okay. Thank you. In Ward One, we've been having little problems on Oak Metal Drive, and we've been getting these notes that you don't, you, you fellows don't get, our names are, both names are misspelled, but that's nothing, and they keep sending us these notes, but no, nobody to talk to, no telephone number, nobody to explain anything about it. Frank has gone over to see somebody on Oak Metals, and I, I didn't go, because I...